Eighteen years, okay, thank you. We'll proceed then. The next item is approval of the Minnesota November two thousand fourteen meeting. All I get to mention is a right.
Right.
Who made the motion?
I am.
I am Ken, I made the motion. And Jerry, listen, Jerry, we're second motion. Hey, you can finish that. I'm sorry. I spoiled all I got to mention to the man who drove them right. Any questions? I must be made second to give approval to the Minnesota November meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion no. Motion taken. Next item is the quarter report for budget amendments. If I may, I left Miss Nancy Kennedy off the list tonight. I mean, in the agenda, she's got another meeting, so it's she. I think she wants to go first and do her, so I'm glad her, so care of y'all, let her do her report.
Thank you so much. I'm going out with my staff. I'd like to point out, I don't know if you all made one of the friends of the laboratory on Thanksgiving, now how is that not getting attacked by the police in there this week? Weekend for safe and anonymous donations to Philly Good is going to be a two hundred and fifty dollar a month donation at results from a sale of some property. And I'm excited about that. Other than that, we're having our annual five day at the end of February, February twenty-eighth, I have our family last year, so I'm on the parents. I'm going to be a daughter-in-law, so we'd love to have you. Do not sit either welcome the runners as they leave or we will come and get back. We take the vantage of that, and then Henry thought that until I was through this report, I would unless two years ago, he was the owner of the yard.
Here. Here. Do I have any questions, Miss Nancy? Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you, ma'am. All right, the next one is going to be the quarter report for the school. Go.
County commissioners, I've invited our U regular finance, join me in the space and keep your hands up if you need to see me. But you can see if I have a question for us. Question, I guess I'm going to ask for everybody at all times, is there anything in there you didn't expect? What? John, that's hard to choose. Any unexpected? So far, we're doing well, we've got the areas that we put those, we're done, we've got to make a repair. And so far, most of our line to join less than half to the pound for the support issue, and that was unexpected.
Well, Jerry, are, are we going back to the old type roof of the school? Are, what, on the schools, they are suggesting, talking to anyone in particular?
Well, some of the work they've done now, they're using the old tar stuff. Yes, well, those roofs are still the same, they've still got a flat pitch for the east side, so that's where they've been laying support. Now, high school had a slight pitch. But yes, they did have that tar stuff.
Are they, are they holding up, is the old one holding up good well, or we have a lot of problems?
Well, my experience at the high school, it was, it was just during those times when it gets really hot, it bulged up, and then once we find that leak, they repaired it. It's one of the problems.
Motion, we approve the quarter report.
Motion, and make second to give approval to the quarter report of the school system. Any more questions? If no, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion no. Motion taken.
We do have a budget amendment.
Okay.
You have budget amendment? He wants to speak.
Basically, it's just money that we received, especially revenue, there was a low amount that we expected, so it actually increases our revenue line, and it also increases the number of people that we help.
Motion to approve.
Aye.
Motion made second to give approval to the budget amendment of the school system. Any other questions? If no, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion no. Motion taken.
Students are doing real well, they've all cleared through the doctor, a couple of ones in the ER today, got cleared, just going to watch them for the night, going to be so frustrated, has got some disorders, don't know all the details of her injuries, but she's back. My friend.
Thank you. The next item will be the highway report.
I think those, uh, about probably nine, one hundred and fifty percent, can't go. No, very far. So it just doesn't hold. I'll give you a copy of this here, first thing we can. I don't know what really is, maybe nine or five minutes.
What does that mean?
I don't know, change, go, I don't know, make sure, I didn't think, I've been asked that a lot of things. Say a lot of roads, there are lots of special, would a lot of roads, it's not even a county road.
So, I think.
No, just, just the, that's all.
Jerry, does that road meet the qualifications of a county road? Or is it live?
Not what it does, it has to be wide and on route, it may be by road, up top, up to the space, but it ain't, it ain't that way now.
So the, the landowner has to make the road, bring it up to space, and the county take it over, and it's a scrap. Is that right?
I have a question, my way, but I don't know, with this road, sunshine, road would line up, but if they got here, it's a county road. This is humane, and I don't worry humane, I just got a bus going to run around, and the county's good, so the bus is rough, so I don't worry with the test. I can look at that road major, and get back, look at that snow, and call it a road.
But did it used to?
I don't know.
So, is that, how did you know all that?
I appreciate what I'm talking about, for sure.
It is being, I think, that the fourth one.
They're playing more than we can.
Oh, it's a, a good country for that.
All right, we're going motion second on Florida, approve the highway report. Sorry, we may have to make a motion second, I think, can you? Any further discussion, though? If no, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion no. Motion taken. Do we have to approve the, the road list, too?
I don't want to give, I wonder if it's the first week of the year. Was there any changes?
They changed it up. Don't have to, I guess, sorry.
I don't want one, it's a little, hey, four years, that's just, that's, off, long the road, hold on. If you do, it's really steep, and I would have figured, every time you take, take, take it, basically, now calling money. I told y'all back, on my bourbon, and I always say, if you got to go to those areas, if you want, we have a dozen of them, so a few dollars, you pay a one.
This is for Jerry, I'm trying.
For three million of the money, if you go back, you're not making new roads, you're trying to maintain what you have there, and just taking the money that, and I've heard plenty while I'm down, and if I own a church, and it's all, big advice, me, you know, kind of, on parties, it's funny, it's funny, too. I'm getting good time, I'm not taking a hose, but that's one reason, I'm.
How much rest money are you getting now, in all the work that you do out there? How much you sell off?
I'll say twenty-five percent, please, but, and I don't have this, I don't know how this, feel, the one I'm taking, my head, my heart, my, my sign, I don't know. Anyway, I, that's, that's what I get, twenty-five percent. This is what I hear in my head, yeah, I don't know, I'm hoping.
This road, Lee, I believe we've always approved, and then you brought another road up, the standard during the year, we had the, at that, too, and I believe we've always been going down.
All right. Well, I'd very hope to approve this.
Aye.
Motion second, Blackstock made a motion, and, not a one second, I'm better interested in wanting to make a difference between them, but I will look at it.
Close down there, yeah.
Any other, any other question?
Yeah, I got one, too. When do you understand, when did this type cut your front to back?
It had been, it had been.
When is it?
It was more heightened, and running out in here.
I understand guitar higher, rock higher. But I mean, did you know, if, if the first of this fiscal year, when, when is the first of this?
About thirty. I would have took maybe, I'm two, I mean, two percent, I'm two percent, I'm taking what's what. I don't know.
Chris, I think what the problem is, not just gigs all across the state, it's the state, the car will get better fuel by the time it's done.
Very less fuel.
Very less fuel, it takes some of the taxes off, some of the fuel, regardless of the taxes out there, we don't hurt the use tonight or not, but, uh, I'm sorry, the corporal's gone, twelve, fifteen cents a gallon on, on Thursday night.
It's twenty for the second time, for something like that.
It's, it's not necessary money's been cut, it hasn't happened, okay, but less, there's less gas tax being paid, the free money's been cut, and it doesn't make any difference, we buy the gas, you buy the gas in Memphis or Johnson City, the money's from the gas taxes, spread equally according to population in each county. It's not like sales tax, sales tax, you spend a hundred dollars in Madison County State, a hundred dollars stays in Madison County, but gas, not like that.
As if I understand, I don't have that much money. We have a lot of place by itself. Mileage on the roads may be going up, but fuel consumption on the miles is going down, or efficiency, plus on top of that, that's a hard figure, not a percentage.
And you get like, like, a lot of, it's.
Right, and then on top of that, you're at two, that cost to make that, you don't have.
You don't need to.
Jerry, where, where is your biggest doubt, laying money on parts and servicing this old equipment?
Lot of it, hard.
Hard.
It's hard, it's, it's rough.
Hold up.
Well, we have more whip, I, I see that, too.
And, and, and parts and stuff, all increased dramatically on that place.
This all, all of Bud's deal, not only is estimated, that's what we're trying to make, but, one, one way is, I'm doing, throughout, throughout, is just estimate, hope we don't get nowhere, it's one of these, I mean, twelve months is a long time, it's, it's been a way, you know, you hope it's late.
Well, now, my儿子, you guys, read the paper here recently, the state is already considering raising gas taxes, because of the gas prices being down, and if it does, it's going to be a pretty short increase.
Gas prices being down, you got to do it, you get away with that, off of our, your gas, you do fine.
They're, they're.
That's the gas, you make the price of gas.
They just got, but he found, oh, gas is being down, the taxes up.
That's what they were saying, hey, those, those transportation workers, that state highway, state road, everything, everyone, well, so what, about two hundred, twenty jack sack, two hundred, that's fine, I whatever, that, you got my vote. It was like, it was.
But most of your roads are going to have it from a freight supply.
I appreciate you, but.
If there's not any changes, state better share it.
No.
Well, it's too shitty.
Only thing, wait, if everyone's pulled up, and it's the same thing, what we get, that's all.
Everybody's getting equal cut, just a small cut.
Right, you know, and we get first the cash, a lot of gas.
Will you get more money if the gas tax goes up?
We hope you just fill your back down, you walk, that's what, like, I was just making, that's what everybody's trying, if it shows you, it's to get your job, that's all.
Okay, we've just got a motion second on Florida, may I draw attention, please? We've got a motion second on Florida, on Florida, to approve the road, Lee, is, any further discussion on that? If no, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion no. That motion taken, okay, thank you. Trustee, the board and, uh, maybe Lassie, who's been on the weather the next two, three days, or, both the directors are going to be up for a point.
I'm going to try to help if I can. We apologize for not getting your four, that three, and mail this time, quarter end of December, thirty minutes, and waiting until twelve, so we have to spur around, get ready for this, uh, other months, we have a couple of months to get ready, plug that in, so this time we're getting, so I apologize for not getting the mail, it's true. My trustee helpful, then she was out in coffee, others, uh, later.
Somebody's got two of them.
Man, I have one. Got extra.
Did you say you made a one?
Hell, yeah.
Does anybody know the answer?
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Okay, history, I'll go through some then. I don't know that I can answer any questions about me, and I will, no, no, we went into the light, into the city, and then we called back, he's been there. He, he's written from Seattle, so I, I think it was pretty.
I don't know what we're, they.
Motion made second to give approval to the trustee's report is presented, is any questions? Oh, excuse me, I got a county fraud report now. Any questions? If no, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion no. Motion taken. Next item will be the county general report and budget amendment.
And, uh, that would be, that would be the, yes, uh, best I remember, I have a copy of this, I would do for the county people, is if it's great for the public, if it's great, we can, sharing, we can see these dangers, we pay out a hundred percent of the road car, we're, hundred eighty, ten turns, uh, land market, if we pay a hundred percent of, we do not do it out of court, this will begin about last fall, start for the year, uh, beginning for, but any, this will be here, moving back, moving forward. Questions?
Move it up, bro. Motion made second to give approval to the county general report is presented, any further questions? If no, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion no. Motion taken. Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Uh, but then, and the solid waste report, uh, he's at forty-eight point, forty-eight percent, uh, everything's in three, no, he's, he gives you the transfer funds back, uh, last quarter, I got him back with the, right, that, uh, he's finished his, he go out there and all that, uh, he's just, I think he's fine with more rent, maybe, try to get some recycling equipment, things like that, uh, but he's under, under.
I'm going to approve the sidewalk report.
Motion made second to give approval to the sidewalk report is presented, any questions? Comment? If no, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion no. Motion taken.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Think I saw the reports, uh, budget amendments, the next is report on sidewalk project, I think I sent all y'all a letter, state what, what happened on that, at his, at his last, uh, last meeting I come to, y'all gave me some extra money, it was right to have for, we hoped it was going to be the end of it, I told y'all I was not going to ask for any more money, I'm not going to ask for any more money, out of county general, but, the bid coming, forty-three thousand dollars, more than what his last estimate was. Uh, I have the money, y'all gave me some money last year, to spend on, uh, maintenance stuff, if anything went bad, or thing happened, so far, we have spent money on air condition, which is ninety-seven hundred dollars, it's a lot we've always spent, so I can take this forty-three thousand out of that, if, if y'all see fit to do that. Uh, I think something needs to be done, but I'm leaving it up to y'all, because I took over extra money, I can actually more money out of the county general fund.
Can we, can we re, pass the thing, their, their original, original number before?
Oh, okay, I, I don't remember exactly what, I don't have that here with me, uh, Mr. Semenoff, but it was, I know it's worth three thousand, a lot of difference.
We, we're a bit more for a thousand, he won't come back after another fifty next time?
We're not going to ask, they will not be asking for no more money, that's it.
They are going to go ahead and pursue it, you know?
If we, if, yeah, if y'all let me spend this forty-three thousand dollars.
Mr. Mayor, how, how much have we, have we already spent on plan, planning, drawing, and stuff?
Yeah, I think it's, it's sixty thousand.
Fifty to sixty thousand.
Maybe sixty thousand dollars, so far.
What's the total amount of this project, count the grant money we got, the state, about two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, is that right?
Five hundred and eighty-five thousand.
The city's red bid, therefore.
They might red bid that. We don't, we don't need to, there's a lot going to come in higher next time, but the state turned their bid down because, because of a little piece of paper that the man bonded on, did not, wasn't certified by state, turned, uh, bid him at his way, I understand, from what Mayor King told me. There's, it's running about a million, million two, million four, not right, I believe it is.
Is what the new bid is?
Do what?
It's five hundred and eighty-eight, what's, what's the total bid on this project?
Five eight, five eight, five eight, five, five eighty-eight.
Yeah.
That's the total, that's the total bid, that's what the, that's.
That's what the new bid is.
That's what the new bid is, right.
Well, I mean, that's the county portion.
No, that's the total bid.
Well, I mean, that's, a, that's, the city has a bid, the county has the total.
Right, 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 that's, that's what I'm saying now, but it's not county, like that five eighty, it's all county, right, right.
The city taking up half of that, right?
No, 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 the city's a separate, they're.
How much is the grant?
Our grant was two, two, you said, yeah.
So, three hundred?
Three ten, three hundred.
Thousand dollars is what we, we have, taxpayers go, we, for this, because.
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Why could they not come off of Crook Street with that handicapped ramp and go to the back door for us?
I tried that, and that's when they sent us this back, about twelve other things we're going to have to do if we require, if, if we want to do that, and I can't ask, I can't ask that jury for the state, we tried, it would have been a lot cheaper, but the state would do it.
I don't see why not, if they got a.
I can't, I don't see why not, either, but I'm just, you know, you know the state, nobody knows.
Are we in a, are we in a position that if, if we reject this bid and, and decide not to pursue this project, that the state can come in here and say we're going to do it anyway, and wind up costing us?
No, I don't think the state would make a statement, say we'd have to do it anyway. I don't think.
They just give grant money to somebody.
That grant money, that, if it goes to somebody else.
However, what's about the grant money, it's only a large portion, the cost now, it's not.
Because it's put on three years by the state, things went up, up, ended up on that, and that's, that's where we are. This thing started out on the thirteen thousand, I'm not going to tell you a lot of fun right now.
It's still close to sixty-fourty, right there?
About sixty-fourty, it's spoken eighty-twenty.
Who, who, who want the bid?
Uh, French Construction out of Savannah, they were, they were about a hundred thousand dollars cheaper than the second bid was.
Do you not know their history, the solid?
Uh, Randy McKenna told me that, that he had worked with them before, and the work is good, that's all I know.
A lot of what?
That's not to get a six portion.
No.
Do we ask the housing firm bid on it?
Yes, yes, we'll bid December, somewhere, seven, somewhere, that full Christmas, anyway. This, this is a firm bid up here, yes.
I'm not so concerned about the looks, it is, it, it does look good, the rag, the walls, but what I'm concerned is the safety of those sidewalks, how they are, and so forth, we could, we could be liable for some.
We, we had two people fall up right here in the barbecue festival on the walls, we're, we're high, we're low, we're stripped on, and I don't know whether you got, it's been around behind the courthouse, and I've done a walk around there, they got through the rocks, above the concrete, and just wanted somebody to trip over that, but they hadn't so, they're right.
I think most of us are just actually making about forty-seven thousand.
You don't think I am not?
I just don't understand why a bid's not a bid, I still don't, and I'll get there every week.
Chris, the first part was not a bid, it was an estimate.
This is the first bid we have. This, this has been an ongoing thing.
For three years.
Three years.
Yeah, when they come down, you know, your grant money, like the mayor said, he was only going to be, that's going to pay for, and it's, it's up now, it's, it's all about.
Of course, and they added about thirty to forty-five thousand dollars to us on a handicap deal, too, so, but, but just we'll get all the light poles off the, off the courthouse lawn, all the electricity will be underground.
And over the year, money has been put back a little along, so.
Right, yeah, right, it's not going, it's not going to be clean.
At least from my perspective, where the art came, uh, we go with this by, we accept this, that, uh, it's going to be good percentage of this, and I expect it to do its job, make sure the students, though, because, uh, we've had history in the past where we've built buildings, and said that it's supposed to help families, and did other things, uh, if we're going to do this, make it earn some money, we don't fear the next year, that might disappoint.
If, if, excuse me, if get this passed and start on, I think this will start on in March, I believe it is, or just quick, so weather breaks, be through it before the barbecue festival next year, this, this year.
And if a pole go down, what about the ones that, uh, Chamber Commerce has, where electricity on the street?
They're going to hit the poles.
They're going to put poles there?
No, they're going to get, they're going to take the poles, their poles, the pole, I don't know, I'm taking down up on the courthouse square, the, the big old crystal poles, those are coming down, those go back to the chamber, because the chamber paid for those. And if they are, it's beyond the ground next.
I don't understand how they estimate this to be one price, and how to come in so much more than estimate.
Yeah, I can't, I can't answer that question.
We don't really have a choice.
We do it or not, you know, we don't have a choice, we do it or don't do it, that's what it amounts to. Like I said, I, I've got the money that's, that want to figure that, but I need permission to use.
I personally think that the art day should help us out, this forty-three thousand dollars, since they want to screw it up.
You can forget that. That don't happen, if, if, don't leave that to school, or what they're going to do out there.
Well, my, my concern, and I, I hate to do this, but it's my concern for the safety issue and, and the amount of money that we've already spent, I've got a motive, we pursue the project at all.
Okay.
I see.
Okay, I see. First, everybody, instead of most, mostly, it's gonna be permission, go ahead and use that forty-three thousand dollars that I have, that will not come out of, of the general fund.
Except the bid five-eight?
Except the bid five-eight, five-eight-five, five-eight-eight. Any questions? I saw a roll call, well, that's money.
Johnny Gar.
Yep.
Jerry Low.
No.
Tyre Block.
No.
Al McCann.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
No.
Tim Rowe.
Yes.
Ken Moore. Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Richardson.
Yes.
Jerry Evans.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Palero.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Reluctant to give.
Jerry Vail.
Yes.
John Wells.
Yes.
Mike Alexander.
Yes.
Fifteen-three.
Fifteen-four-three, yes, so motion taken, thank y'all. All right, the next is gonna be consideration, or consider sale of nursing home. I know this is, this is a hot point, whatever y'all do, it's strictly up to y'all, all I'm gonna do is present what the man presented to me, and y'all got any questions, or whatever else you wanna do, it'd be fine. He leased, he leased a building from us back in March of two thousand twenty, paid about two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars a year rent and, and, and pilot program. Two-hundred-and-twenty-five rent, two-hundred-and-forty-five pilot program. He came to me about two, three weeks before Christmas, and he said, I've decided, with the way the state's going now, I won't have to spend some money in order to get his, his, uh, pay up, the state. He said, I want to, you know, think about, maybe on building you, for nine-point-five million, I'm gonna try to buy this one, I don't know which way I'm gonna go. The letter I sent y'all was dated, I believe, was December the twenty-third, twenty-second?
Second, year later was the thirtieth, and there was the twenty-
Twenty-second, that's when I got it from, from them, making the offer. Offer up front was a million-one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, I believe it was. Then that's a hundred-and-fifty thousand, eight-hundred dollars a year for seven years, that go to two percent every year, in the form of a pilot. And pilot is paying them those taxes, if you don't know what pilot is. A lot of people have, have talked to me about it, of course, I don't mind, but he's the one that has a license operated business, but he can look out, he can build a building and be out in it, probably in it in a year, year and a half, and we'd have any building with that. It's, 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 uh, excuse me, I'm not gonna find out. Don't do it, I told you, Mike. Back on right now, okay, good day. Uh, you know, he was, I don't like to use the word hella global power in the way he has. The county has not had a license operated, never some, years and years, I mean, it's been several years ago. And so, that's where we are, and I'll be glad if anybody in the audience wants to comment on it, or have any questions about it, I'll do my best to answer it. And, uh, uh, he was wanting to sign by fifteenth, I mean, I get signed by fifteenth, but you know, it's, he's a business man, and, uh, y'all need to consider two things, if it builds one, we won't have anything but anything. Oh, yeah, by the way, I forgot this thing, he told us the other day, I believe it was Thursday, Friday one, that when he built the new one, he would give the old one back to us if we wanted, but he wanted to know that upfront, whatever it was.
Couldn't use, we couldn't sell somebody for an assistant care.
No, because we don't have, we don't have license.
Because they don't want anybody in competition with, so that's out of nowhere, that's about all I could, I could do.
So that's where we are.
Land, that's gonna be worth something.
Yeah, that's five, I believe it was five point, I remember, I believe it was five point eight acres, if I'm right, if you remember. Sure, I see, uh, actually, I think it's five, five point eight acres.
You want to give it back, you would have to say that's a deep deficit, why he goes, take it back, give it back for another one.
Well, that's, that's the question, that's, that's the question I'm asking y'all, and I've tried to, I've tried to explain it to you the best way I can. Uh, like I say, he's got the, he's got the license, and he's got the, uh, whatever he needs to operate.
I guess I've, I've got old information back a few years ago when we looked at selling this nursing home. I looked into it, uh, into the financials of it, and at the time, this county was making seven-hundred-twenty-two thousand, seven-hundred dollars a year in rent on this nursing home. And that was in a fair market, being to the public, for somebody to run the nursing home. And it's my understanding, we used to bid that nursing home out every seven years or so to the highest bidder. Has something changed?
They were bid out in a way.
As well?
Bid out in a way, that's when the seventy-two came in.
But back then, the county had the right to lease out, to, to bid out the nursing home to the highest bidder, right?
Right, just the business.
Right, so what's changed? What, what gives this guy the right to come in and build his own nursing home?
He got the license from the people that had it.
How did they get it?
It was thirty years ago, I don't know, thirty years ago.
Well, I, let me, I found something about that this afternoon, it's a mix of all my Nashville calls. I'm not sure we had the right to do that, in fact, lady told me that we basically didn't, that that guy had the license for Chester County, and, and, uh, and after talking with several other people, I'm not sure that the county had the right to bid that. But we did it for how many years? I'm just talking about two thousand eight, I don't know when the license, I don't know personally, Winchester County, I don't know when the highest did have the license, and Chester County did, does anybody know? Mid-seventies. Well, what, what gave us the right then to bid it out to the highest bidder, like we did all those years?
We owned the property, we still own the building, so we had a right to charge every year for the building.
Right.
That's not, we don't have that far, and if we bid it out on the proceedings, you're talking about all that money. We was also spending up to five-hundred thousand dollars a year something out for it, for upkeep, and now, we got it leased out, we're not out a penny for upkeep, so. You gotta watch here on, on the bid out, I mean, you can take in a lot of money when you're, when you're buying new generators, putting on new roofs, everything, you're putting that money back out, the money we get debates, not as much as that, but it's all clear, we're not out any of it.
I understand, but I, I-
We own the building, we don't own the business.
Get back to your question, that's the question I had this air from, and then I had to get, they, they ran me around the world at Nashville. The lady that finally answered it was the director of Health Services up there, and she told me, she wasn't sure that we had the right to bid that out in two thousand eight, when we did. But we did, and that's behind us, Kerry.
I'm not, I'm not gonna back and answer questions or stuff, I have no idea what happened years ago, and I'm not even gonna try to. So, you know, if, if you wanna ask something about what's going forward right now, we're not gonna hash out what's happened in the past. We're gonna talk about what's happened today, two thousand fifteen.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Okay.
But we did, three, four years ago, we were making seven-hundred-twenty-two thousand dollars.
He just explained that to you, that we're spending about four, five hundred thousand a year on that, on maintenance of that. If you take the, you have seven-twenty-two and five-hundred, see what you got, two-twenty-two.
Someone would've had to, went to the state, to the C O N board, and got permission to build a new nursing home.
They did?
They did.
They got the license anyway.
And then Chester County independent, and that is, that's when this commission several years ago voted to sell the nursing home, and we got sued, called we couldn't sell something, we didn't own, all we could sell was the building, we could buy sales shit here. Did we file oppositions at the new C O N? I heard six board members up there.
Ten board members.
Went to a meeting, lost the C O N.
We have a larger platform than, I don't know, all we think of the Nashville bit with, that's, we set across the dead from there.
Okay.
Another question. What they basically told us up there, uh, was we were too late, it was a done deal, and I had certificate of need, and, uh, girls, Leah and Vienna, had been there and asked for certificate of need, and they give them on. So we went, uh, it was just actually too late for it, man.
Well, I mean, I, I've been, I've been to the C O N board, and I know how that works, there's an opportunity to present your case as to why.
It's, we didn't have the opportunity.
Kerry, I asked the, I asked the lady point-blank three days ago, was there a moral, ethical, or legal responsibility for that board to notify the county, and after running around the world with answers and things, basically, the answer I got, there was none.
See, we challenged them also, because they put it in the management county's paper, didn't put it in the local paper, so we didn't find out when it was a done deal, that's why they told us.
But did we get there the day of the hearing, or did we get?
No, exactly, exactly.
Okay, well, we're, we're stuck.
Yeah.
We lost probably the biggest asset the county has.
No, you didn't have it anyway, but we didn't have the license, in order to get a C O N, you gotta have a license, isn't that right?
Well, it's kind of alluded, the, the C O N is issued, and then after the C O N is issued, it just kind of goes away, and comes to have the license, but at one time, we had to have had the license.
If he'll give it back to sixty or seventy, if it's right.
That's everything that we found out.
That's why, that's why I said it.
That's certificate of need, license, still paying the management fee.
And was our county attorney involved in all this, did he?
We had to have a county attorney.
This one wasn't enough.
The lady over there, I don't know who it is, the Department of Healthcare Service, that's their name, Population of Church County, not big enough, operating two nursing homes.
Total.
And so, therefore, um, she had the license for her hundred and thirty-two acres.
Well, we expanded that nursing home, moved it to Nashville, and got the C O N for that.
Well, uh, I don't know, but they made it one.
Made it, Neil Smith, Neil Smith, Fingers Casey, and Anthony Bolt, and, uh, it was Neil.
So the county did it, the county went and got the C O N.
Tommy Highsmith was with them, and, no, actually, I do. Still don't do, I'm Anthony Bolt, and we went to Nashville to blow the loan up there, do it, I don't remember about the stipend or anything.
Let me back up a bit, Mr. Smith, in nineteen, I believe the nursing home was originally built in nineteen sixty-three, am I, is that close to right?
That's correct.
That right? In sixty-three, you didn't, I have that C O N.
I took seventy-three.
And that, the first, the only, the only C O N that they could find, that Chester County had, was in eighty-one, was that right?
That's correct.
They had one in eighty-one to add on to it.
Have you got that county? But if we got the C O N, we should have had the license at some point, it sounds like we lost the license.
We did, we did.
I agree, the, the biggest, the biggest card in the day, we don't have, and it was lost.
Years ago.
Years ago. Mr. Highsmith went with Fingers, and I think Neil, in eighty-one up there, and so, they were both there, and they were working hand in hand at that time. And to tell you where it got separated, when the laws changed, uh, thank you.
All right, please, anyone else?
Questions?
Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Why can the county not give license and hire a man to run this place?
He just told me.
Well, I already agreed with that, too.
The state, the state told, Mr. Butler today, is that right, Jack?
Yeah, I talked to him today, and the reason, come here, I'm not, okay, the reason the county cannot give a certificate of need or a license to run a nursing home is because she had already got a license, and the county hasn't got enough population to nurse a home. So we cannot get a license to run a nursing home as long as he's got it.
How long does his license last, that the?
As long as he wants to keep it up.
As long as he keeps the renewal.
Explain to me, uh, he won't give it up, because, uh, this, this license covers the number of beds at the nursing home, it doesn't cover the building. The beds are what worth the money, uh, the way I understand it, so, a hundred and thirty-two beds is what we've got up there, but they belong to the license, not to the county. All we own is the building and the equipment in the building.
We tried to get the license, but-
Yeah, we tried.
What, why, and, uh, uh, Frich, did he do a thing with life?
No, not for a nursing home.
I could apply for a C O N, and you better believe that guy would get that meeting to oppose that. When he said, if it's good operation, if you'll see it, and, and, is it? If Mr. Sheehan did, probably gonna be, take a dangerous position, his defense, he bought that certificate of need, the person that actually took it, county, free his owner.
Right.
And the license.
And the license.
It would be rather fraudulent to state now, after he's paid good money for that, to take it from him. It goes back, it's, it's spilt milk, that, that C O N went, I hate it, and it's a tragedy for this county, but it's a reality that's passed, and it's not his fault. He bought it in cash, proposed it, had it, uh, and it's, it is the business, the C O N.
They haven't got license.
No, the license, the license. One C O N, he may or may not even use it. I mean, that's up to him, I think he wants to add on, or if it goes over a certain amount of money, he's gotta have a C O N.
Listen, I hope the public out there doesn't go talking to this man, Dan Johnson, we got a relationship out there with him now, whether you like the way the nursing home's being run, or you don't, and I understand how that works with, with, with the public, but this is a good man, I talked to him three or four different times. I asked him, couldn't he give us a little bit more money for that, for that place than he was, and, and he basically told us, I don't have to give you nowhere near that much money, says I, 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 things like this go for two or three hundred thousand all the time. And, and that's, I mean, he can give us what he really wants to, the way the disbursements come back from the, from the state or whatever now. And, you know, he's gonna recover his money, is the reason he's giving us that much, he don't have to give us none, he can walk away, we end up with an empty building. That's where, that's where we're at, whether you guys really won't believe it or not, that's where we're at.
Can Bill reuse something, can Bill reuse something out there?
What?
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 We don't know.
We don't either. If you use it for a lot of things, you have to write it in the code, if, if you change, or if you had, if you had to spend a lot, like, Carol, you have something you want to say?
Yeah, but do we have any kind of contract with this zone, and is he on a contract with the county, or anybody, I mean, do you got any kind of?
You have lease on the building, yes.
Well, when is it up?
In two thousand seventeen.
So it's up in two seventeen, then, then, if, if the county keeps that building, then he's gotta negotiate with you in twenty seventeen.
He won't negotiate, he won't negotiate, he'll build a new one by then.
It is a scarlet destiny, my, my.
I don't, I, I'm gonna say, I don't believe that that man, he's, I don't know the man, but they say he's about to be, I don't know. But he did not get, he did not get him in a position by making, he got there by making deals like he's trying to make with us. He got there by getting something for nothing and making a fortune off of it. Now, this, he's a businessman, and he's, that's gonna be just like a, that's gonna be a place, I don't have any owns, but it's served. But for, for any reason, this facility out here, if he gets full control, probably, if he gives full control of that facility out here, he's got people, he's probably smart, he's got some people running his business, I'm sure, telling him which way to move, and he probably has a top placement. But just saying, we don't want to hit in this, this thing, the healthcare, everything, it's, I don't think there's much money coming in for that thing as it has before from the, uh, I'm not gonna mention the name, I mean, the healthcare, whatever you wanna call it, uh, if he, if his people tell him, say, look, this facility right here is not operating up to our standards, you look at it just like you would a chain of, like a Kroger grocery store, they got, they had a store in South that, I don't think they have one there, but I mean, these corporations, they're getting to make money, that's the reason why they got lots of money, they do it.
Here we are.
By making solid decisions. Comes down the road, this man and his guys tell him, say, look, this thing out here in Chester County is good for, maybe we need to use this just for rehabilitation, we need to move our patients, we've got places other where, uh, and those guys are gonna do it, they, they- and those guys are going to do it. They, they going, they, he's got people telling, he didn't get where he's got. Uh, he got there by getting sweet deals.
Carol, he can do that now. He can do that right now.
I don't understand.
He can do that now.
I'm sure he can.
He can do that today. He didn't have to wait.
Well, and, and what I'm saying, if he wants to build a new nursing home, well, then let him build a new nursing home. First thing he's got to, he may have property, he may own half of Chester County, is all I know. But he's got to find property, he's got to build it. And so what if he does, if we wind up with, with that property out there and that building, it still belongs to us. That's just like a family farm. We, us in this body here tonight, that nursing home was handed down to us. And we're sitting here tonight and say, we got, we wouldn't have it if it wasn't for the forefathers and this people, this group right here. That helped get that here, helped get that facility to Chester County. And it's just like a family farm. I mean, you may have a family farm out there and be raising cattle. And you say, well, cattle isn't too good, I'm gonna sell it. But I don't think you're going to just say, I'm gonna sell it. You're gonna sell the farm.
Can I ask you something? Had you rather have one million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars or a building that you're going to have to maintain, it's going to end up being a liability, which one would you rather have?
Why does that feel like?
Well, because you can't get enough of that.
Well, we got people, listen, you guys are supposed to look for something to do with that building. If someone gets it, if someone just gives you that building, let's say now, that building is built.
What would you do with it?
Chris, I, I don't know. I mean, if I, if I'm a furniture school, we're not, I'm not gonna put a furniture school there.
I have to answer that question, you guys?
I'm just saying, I'm just saying that you, you're scared to death because you got some property to deal with. I mean, somebody's getting something, somebody gives you a farm, are you gonna run and say, man, I own that, I'm always moving? You do something with it. You've got the property out there. Free harvest, because I know they don't pay taxes. But, I mean, they, we're in a deal with, they staying and we done with that building. Once you, this guy, if he gets the deal he's wanting, he's going to own the whole thing and, and he's going to be scot-free with about two million dollars in this seven years, you talk about, he's going to divest his money. It's not a good deal. It's a good deal for him. Uh, that's where he got, that's where he got there. I guarantee you, he got there that way. And like I said, though, what's something that you've inherited and you've got sitting out there, you're not paying taxes on it, it's paid for. Uh, what, what are you scared of? I mean, what are you?
What's free angle coming down?
Huh?
Free angle be worth nothing.
And, and we're not looking, you're not looking at what's happening today. That's just like this whole economy in this country today. They're putting us in billions, millions, trillions of dollars of debt, not thinking what's going to be on down the road for your grandchildren. This thing needs to remain in property of Chester County and they'll do whatever they want to do with it. And if you guys can't find something to do with it, well, hold it up and it'll still be set there ten years from now.
And just throw away, just throw away the one million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this?
That was money that you're gonna spend on sidewalks up there. What's, what are you doing with it?
I mean, people walks up down the sidewalks, enters the mound. You have to go Jackson Biden, thank you, mom. Ain't nothing, nothing like that.
I mean, that, I mean.
You'll be a million, eight million dollars up there. Five, six, seven, eight and a half.
Kerry?
Yeah, just a couple of things about C O Ns. There's an inspiration there of the C O N. I don't know what it is, what it is. And you can't just transfer.
We were told it was two years.
Okay.
Doc, we can't hear you up here. What do you believe that the microphone, don't need to come up there? What's the, the right course in the C O N?
Two years.
Well, it is, from what I found out when I got my C O N, uh, is you can't sell. So if that C O N transferred from Malia D to this fellow, there had to have been some other action before the board for that to happen, is my understanding of it. And there's got to be another, there, there's a time, if that action happened and we didn't know about that neither, then there's a time limit on that one. They give you a, a time limit where you have to act on whatever your C O N is. And if you don't make it in that timeframe, you go all, it starts all over.
What do, I mean, what, what good is a C O N if you don't have a license?
I'm sorry?
What good is a C O N if you don't have a license? A license?
It kind of starts, the whole process of getting a license with certain cards of healthcare, like owning an M R I, owning a nursing home, owning a surgical center, it all starts with going to the state and getting the certificate of need. After that, if you get your C O N, then you have the license to operate that facility. But when Malia D went to Nashville and got the C O N, it's theirs. They can't just sell that, just like I can't sell my M R I.
They sold the license on?
It's my understanding you can't do that. I think when you get a C O N attorney.
Marty, do you know anything about that?
That was part of the sale.
That's what I thought, it was part of the sale.
I mean, maybe it's different for a nursing home C O N or license than others.
I've only got lawyers hired, so one time you had one, like anyone.
You know, lawyers like doctors, there's good ones and bad ones.
Somebody had to ask for two, three times.
And, you know, there's lawyers in Nashville that do pretty much nothing to C O N at all.
You're right.
Doc, the, the Melanie Hill, who Sandra Alden went before back in two thousand and ten, sent me three emails and I poured one on the very, one on the, the way where, where they did relinquish the C O N. The C O N. And I specifically asked them, did relinquish mean that it went out into the air or to Mr. Sheehan? Mr. Sheehan responded by telling me that he had the C O N. The questions you were asking were very good because I'm getting conflicting information. Marty over there saying, I understand, uh, that he relinquished it. Did he relinquish it to the ill or did he go poof out there?
Well, there's a, there's a very good attorney named Jerry Taylor in Nashville. That's all he does, is C O N. The state is going to see, it'd be worth a few hundred dollars, I think, to get his opinion on all of this. And find out what the time limit is on this C O N building, nursing home.
We're getting told it's two years on C O N.
We're back to.
I, I want to stay, I don't know.
Jerry would know the answer.
I've been here in Chester County for twelve years. As long as I've been here, the nursing home's been a controversy. And I understand the emotions involved in it. The bottom line is Chester County is the landlord. So the fellow owns the business. He can take that business anywhere he wants to.
In, in Chester County?
He's got to be in Chester County.
If we're going to dispose of that real estate, if we're going to sell it to them, my understanding of the law is that you can't dispose of county property without putting it out to a public bid. Somebody else needs to be able to bid on it in addition. You can set a time limit and that type of thing. But just because he offers to pay us so much, we can't just say, yes, we'll accept your offer. We've got to bid it out and give others the opportunity to buy that real estate. That's my understanding of the law.
The attorney, I'm sure, tells you. We have to bid out two million plus.
I don't know. I don't know.
I'd sell something like that.
Without a license to operate one, I mean, we can try and see.
But they give him, you know, he's got his standing to bid. Gives us an opportunity to, maybe somebody else wants to come in and become his landlord.
Are you ready?
To have to get someone else to buy?
Yes.
And he was the only one that, that was interested in the building at that time. And no one wanted to buy the building either.
Okay, I'd like to make a post, we postpone this decision to manage until next week.
The morning.
Next week, I'll call.
We never call.
Before we do that, can I, I need to ask a question. Can we get David to explain to us how this is going to affect the county? If, if we, if we do the sale?
Okay, I'm going to post a second, both of you.
Well, could I ask something first?
Your second.
First thing, uh, I wish that we could invest some money on, they speak, come over here to listen to this thing and we can hear very little of what you guys are discussing, but we don't hear anything about it. I don't watch the call on that one. We, we just, we can't hear that. But again, what is the urgency for this guy's thirty days? Now, I, I don't see, well, I don't see the county, we've got a hundred dollars sitting right here tonight for this county. And if you have another call, we, as, as the commissioner suggested, and I'm not saying to you what to do, I mean, why? If this guy can't wait thirty days, then it's going to cost us another one. What's the cost of this body to be tonight? What's the cost of this matter?
If you reach this, it will be another.
Come back in, in, in twenty days or thirty days.
I'm just saying, what is the cost of this body tonight?
Well, divide, uh, well, what is?
Eighteen dollars.
Eighteen dollars. Eighteen dollars.
Eighteen dollars.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, I'm sorry, twenty-seven, Carol.
Twenty-seven dollars. Well, no, but, and we're talking, we're spending money like stuff like this and we're thinking if we can just get over two million dollars from this guy, we're, we're, we're rich. I mean, we, we can get, two, two million dollars is a lot of money, but, you know, I mean, we're spending money. We'll have two million dollars spent pretty quick. Uh, I, I think we just need to.
All we've got to is adjourn, not adjourn this meeting and we can come back and you don't have to pay us.
We recessed the meeting until later. Don't say, sorry. And come back and, and about to be paid on it, except the lights up here are going to cost, what the lights cost to run the lights and heat.
We recessed and I, this county attorney.
We done anything yet.
And he's here, the question about bidding, do we need to, it would seem to me, the afterthought, it would be the bidding thing, would that, would the number bid be, you know, two point two plus the two percent, whatever that accumulates out to that pot? Uh, if we put that as a minimum bid, one, is it required? Number two, is it proper, ethical, let me do, whether it's legally required or not? Uh, would it not accomplish the same thing at the end of, end of the day? It just, me, it matters me what people see it. It's not some shady deal that got, I don't know, I owe this bid.
Yeah, to answer your question, I don't know whether in this circumstance we have to bid it or not. That's something I have to evaluate. It's probably a, a good question to be considered, but I, I don't know the answer off the cuff about bidding.
Could you have it when we come back to recess?
Sure.
Well, I, let me say this, and I don't know, but, uh, I think, uh, it may be illegal to sell this thing without bids. And, and, and I don't think, I think we need to decide first, what you talk about bids. I don't have any people going to be standing in line to, to outbid this guy. I don't, that might just, when we say, let's put this for a bid and nobody bids, well, then the ones that force that can say, okay, y'all want to bid, we got bids, nobody bids, so we're gonna sell it. I think from, from what I have heard and from all the people that I've been around, I know my commissioners have worked on this thing. I know two of them have it so hard. And I know what they've liked from them. There's nobody that they've talked to who's in favor of setting this nursing home. I think we need to decide first, before, like I said, if it's, if, if, the other side can say, well, y'all want it up for bid, we'll put it up for bid. I don't have any people to be in line to bid, to outbid this guy. That might be right, back where he wants to be, say, okay, I'm getting it now. I think we need to say, before we start, oh, we need to know, are we going to sell it or not? And I think, like I said, wait a few more days to see if we do want to sell it. I'm looking to bid on it, but it might not be.
Carol, let me ask you one question. I'm not versed in it at all. I think we're, I think, I just think it's probably the only deal we give, can't give. But let's just say for a minute, if, if he withdraws his bid when he hears about this meeting and he just completely withdraws his bid and we don't get any bid on it and, and we end up with a, with an empty building.
Are, are you prepared, are you prepared for that?
Well, where is he going, Chris?
He can buy a piece of property anywhere in Chester County and move it.
How long do you say it would be before he'd be out there?
Two years.
Two years. Oh, well, if he could wait that two years, you know.
He ain't gonna give it up.
He ain't gonna do it. He will do that.
Well, I, I, so, like I say, you know. If, if he withdraws his bid, and, and I don't know what anybody would bid on it, but if he withdraws his bid and we end up with, with nothing and end up with an empty building, are, like I say, are, are we prepared for that?
I'm just thinking that, that you guys are thinking about, that we're going to give this guy, can you believe that he's going to give us two million dollars this time? I mean, we're going to get two million dollars and a million more upfront, big and, what'd he say?
Million one fifty.
What?
A million one, oh, sorry. Million one fifty.
I mean, and two million, you know, we're going to get two million dollars. That, that's, that's big money, you know, we're going to look, but I mean, I should go looking. You spend, I don't have any five dollars on the sidewalk, it's going to be, what's that price it going to cost?
No, I understand what you're saying. I said, I, I'm just asking you, are you prepared? If he withdraws his bid because of, because of this meeting, because he wanted us to do it by Jan, January the fifteenth? Are you prepared, if he withdraws his bid and we can't get any other bid, are you prepared to get nothing and have an empty building?
Sure. Yeah, they have, they have, they have buildings, I mean, they, they, and they build a building. I don't believe he put in a figure of what, nine million dollars?
Nine point five.
Nine point five.
If he builds a nine million dollar building, I'm going to give it up, put on tax rolls. He will be paying taxes on that nine million dollar building.
And the county will still own this property?
Yes.
I think, I think the empty building is, I don't mind driving, I've driven by that building every day. And, and in fact, and I'm not saying, well, I mean, I, I, it's depressing for me to drive that, but I'm glad it's there, it's a good facility. But I don't think a empty building right there, those places somewhere being taken care of, that empty building, uh, there's lots of things can be done. Part of that building can be built for, uh, office space, a lot of stuff.
Charles, you have something to want to shake your hand with?
No, we need to make sure we can legally do this. So we're in a mess now. Somebody messed up somewhere down the road. I mean, I know it was your fault, it wasn't my fault. And, but we have, we have lost a bunch of money already. And we've lost a nursing home right now. But we need to find out if we legally, let our lawyer find out. What if we go and sell and let him have his bid and somebody comes back to the county, hey, I, Charles, I wanted to bid eight million dollars on that. And what if he's got a lawsuit? We best say we can legally do it, but we made a mess there before, but we didn't do it legally.
You're right.
So we need to make sure it's legal, I think.
I don't have a problem with that.
You'll, you'll, you'll have an empty building. We better do it, huh?
That, Charles, you thought about it.
I just thought of what I was going to say.
Don't forget.
I can see this thing, if this has been sold, while I'm here, here tonight, I'm not selling, I'm on his boss' side here. But I'm looking on down the road. And this money that if it is sold, where is it going?
I would propose we pay on some bills we've got, some debt we've got, if we, if, if we did.
Okay, well, I was just wondering maybe if, if we could lower the tax rate a little bit to get a box of money.
Hmm, because for a while, it wouldn't last long.
By the way. They can get a half million before we can operate. Now you're talking about two and a half.
By the way.
Everybody is thinking about the money instead of the people that are supposed to be perceiving the, the good side of this place and live out there. There is a house full of people out there to live in it now, except it is kind of empty right now. And it's not as well taken care of now as it once was. And nobody's talking about that. Those are the things that need to be talked about. Because it needs to go back to being a nursing home. I'm an old woman, one of these days, I'm going to need to go out there. And a bunch of the rest of you are going to need to go out there. And we need to think about who is going to take care of all these people out there. There's more to it than just the money part.
Well, there's money part for me. It's just like you've got an old cow getting milk and you having to drink milk and all that. You want to sell that cow and then you want to buy milk until that money runs out, then what you want to do?
Can I say something?
Just, after this man, I hear that he's at a, all right, I get you.
I'm probably about the dullest knife in the drawer, right? But I knew quite well, the man that got to help get this nursing home started. If I might say so, he probably had more whistles than what you find in this place tonight.
if I might say so, he probably had more wisdom than what you're finding in this place tonight. That's harsh words. But somebody, and you'll have to watch this, somebody has messed around and wearing a metal of a hesh right now. With all this argument and fussing going on, but I'd hate to, to, to see it gone for Henderson, Chester County. I believe that it has not been monitored properly. The lady's talking about the improvements of me. I probably, I don't bother, don't mean to bother, but I probably made more visits, did. And you know that, the lady, to the nursing home, visit. I lost my mother over there, I lost my wife. I made friends with a lot of the patients I go a lot, I see things, that, they, but, do y'all go?
I mean, yes. You should do, I go.
No, I didn't say, did you go?
Yeah, I go.
Well, how much, how, how much do, do y'all know about what's actually happening with the people that, that, that got released? I mean, seriously.
How do we know about the people that has released?
How do we know what they're, why they're not doing something, some, taking care of the, I know some faces. But I see one taking care of it.
If that's the case, then he's returning to the state, let the state investigate them.
Okay.
We can't, I mean, you know, if, if you see, if you see something, there's a number, you call the state and have it investigated. We can do it, you can do it, anybody can do it.
Talk about it else? They've been here?
Yeah, anybody can.
I'm not going to ask any of y'all about the nursing home, but I just want...
I've been, I've been a lot.
Did you see anything?
All of us? I mean, is a hundred percent okay?
The biggest thing I've seen up there, Mr. Billy, that, that concerns me, uh, and I agree with the lady that just spoke, uh, uh, they, that's their home.
Right.
And I, I brought this up in the other controversy that we had. But, uh, I've seen the employees out there, they're very disgruntled, a lot. And I, I, I don't like that. And I, I don't like this corporate attitude that this man has got. I just simply don't. I've represented the working man for the past forty years, man and woman, the past forty years of my life. And I don't like what's going on in this corporate world. But we're going to be left, either way we go, we're going to be left with a building out there that's going to take a lot of maintenance and upkeep. It is in dire need of a lot of work. So, I, uh, I think we need to give this thing a whole lot more consideration than the vote on it tonight. And I, I agree with Mr. Butler. We have a motion on the floor and second.
Motion, postpone. Get a motion on the floor and postpone.
We know, we need to.
What, what do you think? Yeah, let's not do anything with this just yet. We'll come back to this in a minute and take that. Because once you make a motion to recess, we're going to have to recess. We've got a lot of duty to take care of. If you postpone it out, we'll have to come back, that cost you twenty-seven hundred dollars. If you recess, it won't. Not what, not what Jackie used.
Yeah, the motion is postponed. Yeah, postpone this, uh, for that debate. Again, my motion is...
Until tomorrow.
Title is out until next week.
Until tomorrow.
He don't give him one half way.
Yeah, I'm right, he's right. Now, I got you, now, I know somebody saying thirty days or three days.
I understand if somebody's suggesting that that's what happened. I'm not going to say.
Hold on just a second, let George talk.
I think the biggest thing we need to do is, is listen to what Kerry says about trying to find a lawyer that knows about the certificate of need. Because if we can get that back some way, we can negotiate it. I mean, this guy's got all the leverage, kind of like you said, he'll put you over a barrel. And he's going to try to, to, to push you into making a hasty decision. You know, I, I, I kind of look at it like, I say both sides of it, I guess you would say, but I also look at it like, if this nursing home is sold, and the business loves some money, that's good. But we need to try to work it some way or another, we're waiting to keep it, and keep getting that rent on it every year, that way the future, I mean, in, in ten years from now, two million dollars wouldn't be gone, but we're still getting maybe one hundred fifty or seventy thousand dollars a year, whatever. It is, is kind of towards the future. So I think we need to not make any hasty decisions, and take what Kerry said to heart about trying to find a lawyer or something that can help get that certificate of need back.
I think we got to go to attorney over here. He's already said he can find this information out.
Well, I guarantee him Marty's view. I know they specialize in that medical stuff. Marty, can, can you contact people that, that Kerry was talking about, that do that kind of business, and to make sure we get the correct answers?
I mean, we'll be happy to have that input, yeah.
Just, yes, I'm sure.
We also know what kind of facilities this guy operates in other counties. Will he be a positive one if, if it is sold? Will, will he be a positive facility for this county as per his standards? For, have you talked to other ones he operates? If they're happy with their, their needs, they're being made?
You go to Maplewood, Jackson, Alawood, Jackson, you know, I appreciate those about.
They're all very good facilities?
I'm not saying do it or don't do it. I'm not, I'm not going to.
Right, right.
Uh, all I'm saying is, all I did present to them was he presented to me. And I'm not saying sell it or don't sell it. There's a lot of stuff needs to be done on it. Do you ever think of justice?
Yeah. Yes, I, I think he struck a chord there. Uh, I waited for years to get my sister out there because it was the finest nursing home around, and everybody's sitting there. And, uh,
Years ago.
What this fellow want to buy, a low dollar, or I don't know what, is it such a thing as, uh, I don't guess it could, it could be appraised, could it?
It already appraised.
What did it appraise for?
At one point nine, very, is that right?
One point nine.
That's property censors appraisal.
That's property censors appraisal, one point nine. Okay, it appraised, not?
It, it was listed as county property, so thorough appraisal has not been done on it.
Okay. But, but what I'm saying to you, and all of you listen, is that was the finest nursing home. You go out there now, and I'm out there every week, and it seems to be high in. Now, it's, maybe he's running down so he can buy it. Is that what you're doing?
I think, I think Carol hit it on the head a while ago, talking about the carrot, the, the hospitalization and stuff we've got now. And he wasn't calling names on that either.
Yeah.
But, uh, you're going to find that a lot of your small, small hospitals and persons, small nursing homes are going to go out of business on account of the, of the, uh,
Fort Bellicarion.
Fort Bellicarion, thank you. Get your correct word on that value, though.
I see, and they go to the homes or, or, there's a reason, right?
Do I think?
They're going to the homes?
They're cutting back on, on what Medicaid and Medicare, Medicaid is paying, that's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, that's what I don't know.
And his other stuff.
Do we have occupancy rates out there for the last two years? Do you, you don't have any?
No, we don't.
But, but I think that, that two million something dollars would be gone, and the next thing would be raising taxes on, on, you know.
Thanks, I'm beginning.
I feel like the kind of, for that, that hospitals are getting killed right now with, at the first, uh,
That's what I'm talking about.
Nursing homes are not shit. There's still money, there's still money in nursing home business.
Oh, they're money, yeah.
And, uh, the average price to go buy a nursing home, if you own a license, is about a hundred thousand dollars a day. So if the county's still owning the license for this nursing company, it would be worth over ten million dollars.
You got to beat it up in there, too.
Because you got to have a license. And if we don't have a license, it's worth whatever the square foot is worth. I don't know how many square feet in that building, but, you know, medical offices are going for a hundred million dollars a square foot. Let me starters.
We've got a question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, follow the question. Now he can call the question. Question called, what you got to vote on?
Any question?
The question is?
If you both hear some question, all the session stops. If you both know, we go away with it and start a discussion.
Discussion. Question been called, so I'll vote on that now. That's the way, I mean, that's Department of State, I guess, we'll, we'll come back then.
Wait, we're gone.
Yeah, we're with you.
Tell me what we're voting on.
Voting on the question to stop discussion.
Any discussion? Scotty Garner?
Yes.
Jerry Love?
Yes.
Larry Blackthub?
Yes.
Al McKenna?
Yes.
Jackie Butler?
Yes.
Tim Bro?
Yes.
Ann Moore?
Yes.
Buddy Rick?
Yes.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Sandra Hy?
Yes.
Joseph Palero?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Chris Simmons?
Yes.
Terry Bell?
Yes.
John Wel?
Yes.
Mike Allen?
Yes.
Eighteen four, Jerome?
Okay, the question been called, and it's, it passed. So now we're going to vote on Jackie's motion, postpone this thing for the next meeting. Jackie make the motion, Al McKenna second, the big one, buddy. So we're going to vote on the motion to postpone it for tomorrow.
Vote on?
Until next meeting, I'm sorry, until next meeting.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Johnny Garner?
Yes.
Jerry Love?
Yes.
Larry Blackthub?
Yes.
Al McKenna?
Yes.
Jackie Butler?
Yes.
Tim Bro?
Yes.
Ann Moore?
Yes.
Buddy Rick?
Yes.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Sandra Hy?
Yes.
Joseph Palero?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Chris Simmons?
Yes.
Terry Bell?
Yes.
John Wel?
Yes.
Mike Allen?
Yes.
Eighteen four?
I will say this, I think that was a good motion. It gives us town to work on some more stuff and see what we've got, or what we can do. Okay. And we will still work on this thing that you asked her about later on. We will review on what you asked us to later on.
Okay.
Bring it back. That part is over with, the past eight. The other, the other business on here is to consider purchasing the home property, which is behind that county office building. They took a brick house with about, uh, half acre to three quarter acre. I don't have a use for it now. We on two sides of the, we're on two sides of the property. Uh, once it's gone, it'll be gone. He started out asking for seventy-nine thousand, seventy-nine thousand dollars for it. He come down to seventy-four nine. Had a commission today, said, "See if he'll take seventy." He called his sister, came off Saturday, and said he would take seventy for it. To me, that's a good buy. We don't particularly need it right now. I mean, I don't know what we do with it right now. A five year down the road, who knows what might need for it, so.
If you can sell the house off?
Sell the house off as you want to. It's a half acre. Probably a half acre to three quarter acre, probably. I'm not sure on acres.
How much is the house worth?
People, like they said, it depends on what, a blue roof, a house, what for a house. Eight, five, ten thousand dollars.
The only reason why I brought this to you is because when Ken bought the old, where the old house was, there was an old white house under Tom used to live in. And he, there was a joint agreement that if the other house ever sold, the county would have the first, first wife's refusal to. So I want to bring it to you before you sell somebody else.
So if county got officially used for it, what would it rent for, or what would you rent it for?
I have no idea. I don't know. Most houses, bringing it worth five, six hundred dollars. I don't want to school position, which, trouble, one of those houses out there went to rental.
Five hundred?
Five hundred.
Is it in good repair?
Yes.
Maybe it's like a way for about, you know, it's a tiny, special. Is it a two or three bedroom?
Three, I believe. I was hitting, I think it's three.
I make a motion, we, we pay the man seventy thousand dollars, not just seventy thousand dollars to the county person. Second.
Motion second, in special.
Yeah. Who's paying close?
Yeah, we'd have to do that, I'm sure, but, speed it. No more, don't answer. I see any other questions, any other discussion, anywhere. If not, a real comment.
Johnny Garner?